Hello everyone and welcome back to the third and the last day of the PLZ Forum for Ecozoic Era 2020. Over the last two days, we've had six sessions and we've got three more to go through today. The time here in Korea is 10:00 AM exactly. We'll get right started with the special session today. The special session for today is organized by the Reconciliation and Coexistence in Contact Zones Research Center, abbreviated as RCCZ. And the topic is Solidarity, Assembly, and Governance: The Peace Process in Contact Zones of East Asia. Let me introduce to you the moderator, Yong Goo Cha, professor at Chungang University, Korea. We also have six presenters. Kyung Hwa Lim, humanities, Korea Research Professor of the RCCZ Research Center, Chungang University, Korea. We also have Won Hee Anna Jo, professor of theology and culture at Garrett Evangelical Theological Seminary located in Chicago. Naomi Chi, Assistant Professor of Graduate School of Public Policy, Hokkaido University, Japan. We also have Seong Kyung Kim, Associate Professor of University of North Korean Studies in Seoul, Korea. We also have Woo Hyung Chan, Associate Professor of RCCZ Research Center, Chungang University, Korea. And lastly, we also have Byung Kwan Son, Professor of Department of Political Science and International Studies, Chungang University of Korea. If everybody's ready, I'll hand over the mic to you. Professor Yong Goo Cha, are you there? Welcome, everyone. Professor Cha, hello?
네, 안녕하세요. Good morning and good evening, everyone. As introduced, I'm Yong Goo Cha from Chungang University. Due to COVID-19, we are having this conference via online. Nevertheless, to have a more lively conference, I'd like to chair this conference and I'd like to stand and speak. This conference is hosted by UNRSD and People for Earth. Welcome to the forum. The topic for this conference is Development, Environment, and Peace Nexus: Peace Building in Borderlands. We started this conference this Thursday, and we are having this conference for three days and we've been discussing the hottest topics about borderlands. As you know, in Korea, there are a lot of borderlands, including DMZ. Korea is bordering with Japan and North Korea is bordering with Russia and China. For now, we are living in the globalized era. But still, East Asia, China, Korea, and Japan are technically waging a war regarding the borderlands and territories. RCCZ Research Center has been studying the potential reconciliation and coexistence in the borderlands in East Asia. So in this session, we'd like to discuss the topic of peace building in borderlands in East Asia. In this special session, we have speakers from Korea, the US, and Japan. And we have six speakers for this special session. After hearing all the presentations, Son Byung Kwan, the professor of Chungang University, will join us for discussion. I believe you spent a long time on this presentation, but we are given only two hours for this special session. So I feel bad to ask you to finish your presentation in 15 minutes. And there are also an online audience and viewers. They can ask questions via online. And in this session, we will take questions from the audience. So for the interest of time, I'm going to speak the biographies of each speaker. But if you visit the website of the conference, you can have more information on the speakers. You can see the detailed information on their research activities. So please go to the website if you are interested. So due to the time constraint, let's go straight into the first presentation. The first speaker is Kyung Hwa Lim, the Research Professor of RCCZ Research Center. And she's going to tell us the production.
She'll present on Tsushima's Transformations in the Middle-Supreme 2019 Conflict Between South Korea and Japan. She's been doing a lot of studies on the Korea-Japan relations, so please, Ms. Lim.
Good morning, everyone. I'm Kyung Hwa Lim from RCCZ Chungang University. It's great pleasure for me to attend this marvelous international conference virtually. Today, I'm going to talk about Tsushima, an unusual island that has been directly affected by the dynamics of relations between South Korea and Japan. I'll be especially focusing on Tsushima's transformation in the midst of the 2019 conflict between South Korea and Japan. Tsushima is sandwiched between South Korea and Japan, but geographically, it's more than twice as close to South Korea as to Japan proper. Tsushima is Japan's territory geographically closest to Korea. Tsushima's relationship with Korean peninsula dates long time back into history. The Tsushima Current Crosses the Straits Between the Korean Peninsula and Tsushima From West to East, Carrying some of the trash from Korea's southern coast or even Jeju Island to Tsushima. The residents of Tsushima have been cleaning up the plussum and jessum every year to greet the visitors. Recently, youths from South Korea and Japan have held an event to clean up garbage together. Before and after the Korean War, human bodies were worshipped ashore, so some residents cremated them. However, the South Korean-Japanese trade role started on July 1st, 2019, when the Japanese government announced its restrictions on the export of the materials used for semiconductor and display production to South Korea. This dispute meant a full, long-term escalation of the pre-existing conflict accumulated between the two countries. The pendants of Korea entered a full-blown diplomatic war. The media were reporting on the South Korean-Japanese relationship hitting the rock bottom on their lowest level after the 1965 normalization of the diplomatic tie. In Korea, the boycott of Japanese products in reported as no-Japan movement. The movement for voluntarily abstaining from traveling to Japan was vigorously unfolding as well against Japanese export regulations. As a result, the tourism industry suffered a serious blow. Tsushima is heavily dependent on the income generated by the South Korean tourists. Thus, it was hit directly and heavily. After a high speed shift started by ploy between Busan and Tsushima in 1999, the number of Korean tourists increased from about 7,000 in 2000 to erupting 400,000 in 2018. However, as the 2019 conflict began, the number fell sharply. In November of the same year, the number of South Korean tourists decreased by about 91% compared to the same month of the previous year. Moreover, after all visitors from South Korea were refused entry from April 3rd, 2000, due to the Corona pandemic, there were no South Koreans visiting Tsushima any longer. The impact of the South Korean-Japanese conflict on Tsushima was immediately apparent. Here, you can see the garbage on the beach of Tsushima. The appearance of Tsushima Beach covered in garbage, which was introduced by a Korean public broadcaster on June 30th this year, was very shocking. When exchanges between South Korea and Japan were blocked, Tsushima, which claimed to be an island of exchanges between Korea and Japan, became an island of borders. It was paying a severe price for the conflict between South Korea and Japan, and the dramatic changes there are drawing attention again. Meanwhile, as the flow of people, goods, and money had ceased and the local economy lost its vitality, the number of people leaving this island began to increase. Tsushima City in this year, for the first time, fell below the required 30,000 population figure needed to maintain its status as a city. In my presentation, I'm going to shed light on the underlying reasons for the present crisis by analyzing the process of establishment and development of the Tsushima Arirang Festival, a symbol of Korean-Japanese relationship mediated by Tsushima. This video is 1959 image of Tsushima, which flourished at the base of smuggling. Please enjoy Tsushima's appearance at that time without any sound, because we don't have much time. Traditionally, Tsushima has been always quick to react to the evolution of two countries' relationships and has been constantly reconfiguring its identity in its quest for survival. After the beginning of the modern era, Tsushima and the southern coast of the Korean peninsula colonized by Japan formed one single living area. This environment suddenly changed after Korea was liberated. As free traffic to the Korean peninsula became impossible, Tsushima began functioning as a gateway where the Japanese authorities were cracking down on the Korean smugglers trying to travel to Japan. Moreover, as the Korean peninsula was divided and DPRK was established in the north and the tensions between it and South Korea increased, Tsushima was also regarded as the frontline bastion against communism. In addition, as South Korea also demanded the return of Tsushima from 1948, the crisis awareness of the islanders who viewed themselves as the frontline bastion against Korean anti-Japanese sentiments was heightened. The transition to being an island of borders meant the severance of longstanding historical ties with the Korean peninsula. By the way, after the 1945 liberation, this borderland island was also home to about 2,600 Chinese Koreans who eked out their living mainly by charcoal production and seafood collection. Some of them survived by smuggling. It was, however, an uphill battle for survival in the anti-communist and anti-Korean atmosphere of post-war Tsushima under the surveillance of the Japanese authorities. However, after the 1965 normalization of the South Korean-Japanese relationship with the growth in South Korean-Japanese exchanges, Tsushima had been transforming its identity from that of a borderland island into that of a hub for South Korean-Japanese tie. Economic reasons have played a decisive role behind Tsushima's transition from an island of borders to an island of exchanges between South Korea and Japan. In the 1950s and 60s, charcoal industry and smuggling played a crucial role in Tsushima's regional economy. However, the call to oil-energy conversion and legalization of the trade between South Korea and Japan in the wake of their diplomatic normalization in 1965 destroyed the basis of Tsushima's economy. At that point, Chinese Koreans either left this island for Japan proper or took the repatriate boats and joined the exodus to North Korea. Tsushima had to rebuild its local economy through normal exchanges with South Korea. Here, the launching of the parade recreating Josen Dynasty official emboyess procession at the Izuhara Port Festival, also known as Arirang Festival, created a great momentum for Tsushima's transformation into an island of exchanges between South Korea and Japan. The beginning was when a private Japanese businessman accepted a proposal of Shin Gisu. Shin Gisu is a Chinese Korean who was devoted to research on the Josen Dynasty official emboyess procession. Shin proposed to introduce a reenactment of such a procession to the festival, and the proposal was accepted. This was rapidly made into a par and parcel of the local promotion project. From 1992, extended and similar procession reenactments were organized in other Japanese areas, historically related to the Josen Dynasty emboyess mission routes in Japan. Regarding the purpose of the reenactment, they stated, "We intend to transmit the spirit of the mutual sincerity and trust which was behind Josen Dynasty emboyess processions, a historical asset of the Korean-Japanese goodwill that indirectly brought peace to East Asia to the future generations." However, the Arirang Festival emphasized only the selective memories of friendship between Korea and Japan by simplifying the complicated historical development between Korea and Japan. A different history, that is, the history of colonial rule and the existence of Chinese Koreans who were exploited by the residents of Tsushima was excluded. The 2019 conflict between Korea and Japan is concurrently a consequence of the refusal to seriously deal with the memories of imperialism and colonialism in the context of the post-1980s promotion of South Korean-Japanese exchanges and of the exclusive focus only on the current interrelationship. The 2019 South Korean-Japanese conflict was also an instant urging Tsushima to listen to different memories and voices. It goes without saying that Tsushima's path to coexistence and prosperity also depends on such an inclusive attitude. Thank you for your listening.
Thank you very much. I I think I talked too much about being punctual, about finishing your presentation. Thank you very much for keeping in time. So she told us about the Teema Island, the unstable island of the Korean-Japanese relationship. And what we heard in common about the borderlands is that borderlands can be a creative space and it has potential of economic power and benefits. And that is the common view among professors and scholars.
So she talked about the relations of the region within neighboring borderlands, and you can have an impact on the center area. And also, it can be also affected by the relations of these two neighboring countries or the neighboring regions. So it was a case of Tsushima Island. Thank you for the great presentation, and you're going to move on to the second presentation.
The second speaker is Professor Anna Jo from Garrett Evangelical Theological Seminary. And Professor Jo has been studying their theology and culture. And today, she's going to tell us the open wounds of Korea's DMZ. She's going to also tell us the integration of borders to heal the wounds. Professor Jo?
Okay. I'd like to thank the conference committee for the invitation to share my thoughts here, especially to Professor Lim for her encouragements during the past week, when in Chicago, the COVID-19 was making an incredible surge, among other things. So when I received the concept note for this conference that was shared with me, the document not only pointed to the difficult realities along and within various global borders and borderlands, but also accentuated their particular and possibly promising potentialities precisely because of its political, social, geographical, and equaliminality on the cusp of giving birth to new lives and new emergencies along different registers. So in 2001, just to give a little bit of background, as a person who grew up in the US, I returned to Korea since I left there in 1976. And at that time, I was able to visit what is known as the DMZ, ironically, the most densely militarized zone in the world, that included the JSA. The Korean DMZ, as you all know, is now the most heavily armed place in the world today, given its small size. It is only 2.5-mile strip of land that has sliced the Korean peninsula in two since end of the Korean War. And the 800-yard-wide Pamonjam is a still crossing point between the Koreas. At that time, I remember thinking that the DMZ reminded me of a visible scar or an open wound and also reminded me of Latin American poet Eduardo Galeano, who wrote of open veins of Latin America. So during the visit, I struggled with visceral responses that ranged from anger and pain to sorrow. Back in 2001, the tourism company indicated that about 100,000 foreigners flock annually to look at this terrain. Tight security and heavy military presence made this seem like a wasteland, yet ironically, this place fosters a nature sanctuary, giving space and freedom to some of the most endangered species in the world. The nearly dehumanized area is one of the world's greatest wildlife sanctuaries, protecting species such as the magnificent Manchurian crane from extinction. Viscerally, though, the DMZ was less an open vein and more like an open grave. I have in the presence of other border markers, like the countless proliferating checkpoints that zigzag all through Palestine that capture people into little pockets and function as an open carceral system, felt similar strength of historical affective forests that haunt those sites and in the air of people who live with and around borders. So here today, I want to say a little bit more about borders and borderlands. And because of time constraints, I won't be discussing the US-Mexico border too much in this paper. So I continue to be haunted by the ongoing and cumulative sedimentation of trauma and grief that people who may not have known the direct effects of the Korean War might also feel. Crisscrossing lines on the global map are drawn mainly by colonial imperial powers around the world to separate enclosed partition and controllability of peoples. Despite popular pseudo-political rhetoric that borders are built for the sake of security, it is in fact a carceral structure aimed directly against freedom of mobility against populations on the other side of the border. The latter not only feeds the already prevalent taxonomies of racial anxiety to any nation-state desiring dominance, both borders significantly function as a weapon of political management of populations and a continuation of nothing less than what comes across as a universalized racial capitalism's global force. Since the inception of global colonial projects by Europe and the emergence of nation-states and wars that are without end, borders have come to mark and measure the power of sovereign nations. While one may argue there are many overt and covert rationales that justify creation of borders, most often economic projects with liberal political rationales, like the American exceptionalism, economies of militarism fuel imperial desires for extraterritorial dominion and incalculated, slow incremental extraction of life energies, both material and spiritual, as well as eventual disposal and disappearance of peoples, or what some Palestinians, for example, refer to as the depopulation movement. These multiple vectors support US borders or wall-building and militarized borders to curitization, whether it demarcates indigenous land, redlined urban neighborhoods, militarizing interventions throughout the world. US-funded Israeli walls, for example, marking up ever shrinking Palestine or along the US-Mexico border. Militarism's exercise of power along the borders lies in policing such borders, controlling the mobility of peoples, forming rationales for making these extraterritorial incursions and flexing its powers not simply at the border but beyond the border to subordinate other sovereign powers, similar to the recent instance of the US Border Patrol agents who went to Guatemala in early June 2019 to supposedly end the tide of migrants from Central America, but it was a different kind of covert military operation. So while I do not offer analysis on the details of emotional or affective infrastructure of grinding economy of terror on the ground upon vulnerable bodies here, I want to briefly underscore the savagery of militarized spectacle of borders and wall-building projects as colonial projects, both material and affective or emotional, particularly the DMZ as a border that has become even more intensified over the years. These unceasing military interventions by the US around the world indicate not all sovereignies are created equal, as is shown in the spectacle and spectral presence of stylized cultural militarism that has become normalized, particularly in the citizens in Korea. So I'd like to just make some bullet points sort of contribution remarks here to the already expansive presentations during this conference. First, that borders and borderlands are man-made or human-made. Going back to the proliferation of colonial presence, borders and borderlands mark the presence of imperial sovereign power to carve up territories, peoples, and cultures. It is the most visible sign of exercise of juridical power over life and death. Second, borders and borderlands today are sustained often by the legacy of imperial powers and functions primarily to make way for or against global economic flows, a kind of a global carceral regime. The borders are used to secure insecurity, used to secure economic inequality, used to barter state-sanctioned extractiveness against vulnerable peoples. Borders serve as secrocratic wars where the military complex sells the notion and the practices of security state against its populations. Border-making and border-managing are highly lucrative projects. Creation and maintenance of borders and military security are primarily about economics, even as these terror tactics produce material and affective damages. Border-making then is a global economic project that benefits the few on both political and economic registers. Military contractors like Lockheed Martin, Raytheon, and Northrop Grunman have become key partners in border-making along the UX-Mexico border, as well as other borders in various global sites. Partnerships involve high-tech military surveillance equipments, of course, like drones used for military operations in high-intensity conflict regions, but also as partners in exchange of information and surveillance. Third, borders and borderlands are never discrete entities, but rather are always tangential to another territory, peoples, and cultures. So what does this mean? Borders and the space that mark the borderlands cannot be recognized as some discreetly isolated space. For example, one may say that the DMZ zone has become an environmental safe haven for many species. However, that zone However, that zone also exists with the memory of violence and displacement. As in the case of the Sonora Desert along the US-Mexico border, the US Border Patrol has learned how the desert becomes an active border control agent in the biopolitical game of managing migrants who make an arduous and deadly journey through the beautiful Sonora Desert. The desert is harnessed by the US to manage migrants in that borderland zone. Human agents do not need to kill migrants, rather they let them cross through the desert. So this particular border has become what Jason DeLeón refers to as a zone of structural violence, in which warfare technology combined with specific utilization of natural environment along the border are used to enforce biopolitical forms of border control with impunity. Borders and borderlands also often are about mobility and incarceration and the dispossession of peoples from that land and severance from the relational ties that have been there with their ancestors. Borders and borderlands produce ongoing sedimentation of emotions like loss, grief, terror, and anxiety that are part of traumatic events of dispossession and forced migration, often collectively never expressed or processed. We know now that unattended trauma in individuals often change even the DNA over generations, so what is known as the epigenetics, meaning that the body keeps a score and the body remembers and the body speaks. In the case of Korea's DMZ, the two Koreas are still 70 years into a standstill from the war. So how can we possibly say that we have processed the generational inheritance of loss, yearning, grief, and unworn sorrows of our collective hearts and bodies? And how is it that the borderlands of the DMZ not serve primarily as a daily reminder of affects like terror that shape and reshape collective psyches of Korea and those in the diaspora? At the same time, there is a kind of emotional fatigue from decades of living with a tragic narrative that never resolve and narrative serves as political management. As Sukyoung Kim notes, the way Korean War is remembered in South Korea has been monopolized by the state rhetoric of mourning during most of the division. It would take more than a tragic narrative to overcome the trauma. So my last comment here, I want to say a little bit about how the collective affective force, the emotions that are generated, you know, between the 70 years of the standstill, how that actually might be harnessed. So that attending to the affective forces among those who live in proximity to borders and borderlands may allow us to imagine and to reimagine the work of peace as practice of living otherwise. How have the collective work through the loss and unworn grief intimately known by many Koreans and is daily reminded through the presence of the DMZ? So there are costs for de-militarized borders, dissolvement of borders and borderlands, but is this really possible given the global military complex? The colonial and imperial foundations to many borders and borderlands, like the DMZ, are no accident or happenstance. It comprises of oversaturation of particular emotions for generations, a world of non-access and exclusion. It organizes lives and the psyches of those who live along it and around it. What is required to dissolve the DMZ for peace in Korea? Perhaps an immense and powerful creativity that is right now unimaginable to us. What are the conditions of possibility for us to dare to imagine new relationships, new possibilities when borders inhabit, inhabit this very capacity to not only think but to be and to live otherwise? So here, I just want to leave with a word. As we begin to reach for possible futures with no or less border regimes, my hope is that no hesitation hinders our capacity to imagine another world. And I offer a word here from a geographer, John Agnew, who writes, "Borders trap thinking about and acting in a world in territorial terms. They not only limit the movement of things, money, and people, but they also limit the exercise of intellect, imagination, and political will. The challenge is to think and then act beyond their present limitations." So here's to being in solidarity with global spaces of borders and borderlands that we might do the work of reducing them. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I think you made four points regarding this topic. Discussing Professor Song Byung-gwan may be able to give us more details when we have panel discussion. And the professor introduced us the militarized borders and the correlation between the weapons sellers and the Border Patrol. And she also talked about how to heal the trauma experienced by people living in borders and borderlands. And she emphasized the need to heal the trauma. So it is an interesting topic to discuss further. Thank you again very much for your presentation. Now let's move on to the third speaker.
Our speaker is from Japan Hokkaido University, Akihiro Iwasita and Naomi Chiwu, who present. Two professors are now the professors of the Hokkaido University. And there we have a national institute and they have been there for a long time with a lot of experiences. And on behalf of the two, Chi and Naomi will present. And she is also the next presenter, president or the chair of the ASA. And let's have the presentation, which will be about the Kuril Island, the contested borderlands. So please.
Kind introduction, can everybody hear me? Great, thank you. I also would like to thank the conference organizers for inviting me to this really prestigious conference. I would like to thank my colleague, Professor Iwasita, for joining us. He was, he's attending another Zoom meeting and so it's really, he's trying to go between a couple of Zoom meetings here. So I really thank him for being here for our presentation. I would also like to thank my colleague at the University of Birmingham, Dr. Paul Richardson, who actually wrote, co-wrote this paper with me a few years ago. And so the presentation that I will make today is based on the paper that I wrote with Dr. Richardson. And Professor Iwasita, of course, also has contributed to the presentation. So without any further ado, let me share you my, share with you my slides for today. Okay, and I realize that we are strict on time today, so I will try to make my presentation in 15 minutes. I will time myself. Okay. So today I'm going to talk about a particular border that we have here in Japan, a border between Japan and Russia. And as Professor Cha has mentioned, I will be talking about this set of islands. We call them the Northern Territories or Hokpordodo in Japanese. In English, we call them the Southern Kuril Islands. As per the introductions are, in Hokkaido University, we had a border studies program that started in 2009. And it was started at the Slavic Eurasian Center, Eurasian Research Center. Now we call it the Border Studies Unit. And we are working on various border-related issues, including national boundaries, as well as traditional and human security issues. My particular actually expertise is on migration and gender, but I've been working with Professor Iwasita and a couple of my colleagues who worked at the Border Studies Unit on national boundaries as well. We also have an art, sorry, journal that we produce and it's called the Eurasian Border Review and it's on our website. So if you're interested, we have various articles on national borders and security issues. So we invite you to take a look at our journal as well. Now today's presentation, I will be looking at the Northern Territories or what we call the Southern Kuril Islands. We're, I'm going to look at them as contested borderlands between Japan and Russia. The islands are called Ituru, Kunashir, Shikotan, and that, and we have another one called Habomai. And these are the four northern territories. And what I will be doing today is I will mainly focus on the peace-building program. And I will focus on two particular programs. One is the visa-free and passport-free program between Japan and Russia in this northern territories and the humanitarian aid between Japan and the northern territories. And at the end, we will leave you with some tentative observations. So where are the northern territories? So this is the island of Hokkaido. This is where our university is. Sapporo, where the beer is made. The Sapporo is right here. That's where our university is located. And these are the four northern territories, the four islands of the northern territories. And it's, if from the city of Nemuro, you can actually see the, some of the islands on a very clear day. So the historical backdrop before these northern territories, so until the end of the Second World War, the entire Kurl chain was under the Japanese occupation or Japanese jurisdiction. However, in August and September of 1945, the Soviet military swept down the chain, imprisoning the Japanese soldiers, and a few years later repatriated all the remaining Japanese civilians. Today, the islands remain de facto part of the Russian Federation, falling under the administration of the Sahelene region. Even today, the two sides, two sides have failed to sign a post-World War II peace treaty. That's where it stands right now. The northern territories today, most Russian visitors to Japan and Japanese visitors to Russia require a visa. However, for the Russian residents and former Japanese residents of these disputed islands, there exists a unusual visa-free and a passport-free regime. Alongside this visa-free program, the Japanese government has also provided humanitarian aid, such as diesel, oil, food, and medicine. There are also small infrastructure projects, such as the building of a new port in Kunashir, clinic in Shikotan, as well as diesel generators and other facilities on the island. In the past, the reliance of Kuril islanders on Japan and these programs have posed challenges to the Russian sovereignty over the territory of the Southern Kurils. David Kaplan in 2000 produced a paper and in it he had argued that on the border, a unique set of forces affect the residents of these regions and whole new ways of thinking about the state, the nation, and the immediate surroundings are forged. So let me look at particularly the visa-free, passport-free program and then I will also mention a little bit about the humanitarian aid. So the visa-free, passport-free program started in 1992. Almost 9,000 Japanese had visited the Southern Kuril Islands and some 7,000 Russians who lived there have traveled to Japan. These visits have included demonstrations of Japanese and Russian music, research into the island's wildlife, debates on the islands and future, and even a fashion gala. So it's mainly cultural events that they have there. The official aim of the exchange program is to promote mutual understanding and friendship between Russian and Japanese participants. I'd like to show you some photos of this visa-free, passport-free program. So this is the ferry that takes the Japanese participants on the visa-free, passport-free regime to go to the northern territories, the four islands. This is a particular gentleman who is paying his respects to his ancestors. So this visa-free, passport-free regime enabled the Japanese residents, the former of Japanese residents, to come back, come back to their islands to pay respects to their ancestors. And this is one of the cultural events that they have. So they have Russian participants and the Japanese participants that come together and enjoy the Russian food and Russian music, Russian dance together. There's also a youth program as well. So these Russian youth from the four islands have come to visit Japan as well. And we have a coordinator, we have a Sahelene region office in Hokkaido Prefectural Government, and she usually coordinates these youth programs. So the Japanese Ministry of Foreign Affairs, MOFA, emphasizes that the program operates under the premise of not harming the legal positions of either Japan or Russia regarding this territorial dispute. The Japanese government also requests that Japanese citizens do not enter the territory of the Southern Kurils, or what we call the northern territories, outside of the visa-free, passport-free program until a settlement is reached. Despite the inevitable political nature of these visits, in 2005, then the Sahelene governor Ivan Makelov explained that the visa-free, passport-free program has permitted an quote-unquote "increasing number of citizens of both countries to meet with the habits, culture, and the way of life of their neighbors and in this way further the development of friendship and good neighborly relations," unquote. Not, however, not everyone feels the same and some are suspicious of the geopolitical motivations behind the visa-free, passport-free program. The elites in Sahelene have become concerned about the impact of this visa-free, passport-free program on the Kuril islanders' perspectives towards the destiny of these islands. Next, I'll look at the humanitarian aid. So one of the most obvious benefits to the islanders of the visa-free, passport-free program has been when it had served as means for the Japanese side to deliver humanitarian aid to the poverty-stricken islanders. The humanitarian support from Japan became literally a matter of life or death for Kuril islanders when on October 4th, just after midnight, a huge earthquake and tsunami hit the islands, killing 11 people and injuring 242 people. The neglect from the Russian side and the material benefits of the Japanese assistance inevitably had an impact on the islanders towards their view, their view towards Moscow. A significant portion, and this is a quote from a Russian politician, "A significant proportion of, proportion of the islanders bid farewell to the Kurils after the infamous earthquake of autumn 1994. Then, the spirits of the Kuril islands were terrible. Namely, they scarcely believed in rapid and effective state help for the victims. In the worst moment, when neither the center nor Sahelene region could quickly help the islanders, it was from the Japanese side that fuel and products came. And on Shikotan, after the earthquake, schools and hospitals were also built by the Japanese. Kuril islanders remember this," unquote. However, in recent years, the development plan of the Kuril Islands initiated by Russia has made great progress. Currently, there is a new medical clinic in Shikotan that offers services equivalent to that of clinics in Nemuro. And there's an airport in Ituru, which is capable of full operation. And in addition, with the help of Chinese investments, developments are taking place in Kunashir and Ituru. Thus, the social infrastructure and the academic condition in the four islands, the four islands are now compatible to that of Nemuro. Therefore, the relations between the four islands and Sahelene have become much stronger. So in the past, you see that many of the Kuril islanders were depending on Japan. And in fact, many of the islanders wanted even to belong to Japan because at their worst time, it was Japan that helped, not Moscow, not Sahelene. But of course, with recent developments and Russia's development in these regions, it's making a huge progress. And so obviously, the lifestyle and the social conditions in the four islanders are now almost equivalent to of Japan. So less and less people on the islands now depend on Japan. So that is affecting the relations between Japan and Russia now, in terms of these northern territories. So the, my last few slides here, so tentative observations. Despite the inevitable politicization of the visa-free, passport-free program on both sides, it has nevertheless been an extraordinary initiative that has seen former Japanese residents return to their place of birth as guests. So this is one of the big achievements of the visa-free, passport-free program, that the Japanese residents were able to return to their birthplace and to pay respects to their ancestors. And in the past, generous humanitarian aid delivered through the visa-free, passport-free program has a profound effect on the Russian Kuril islanders, who greatly appreciated the assistance at the time when their standards of living were becoming desperate and the feeling of being abandoned by their own politicians in Moscow was increasing. However, recognizing a wavering of public opinion among Kuril islanders and together with Moscow's improved finances, the Russian state has reasserted its control over this territory. The visa-free, passport-free program now has truly become an exchange between the two neighbors. Thus, these recent developments in the four islands, its status compared to Nemuro becoming much more equal and their strong relations with Russia-Sahelene has made the resolution of the territorial dispute much more difficult. This is sort of the irony of the situation. So in turn, currently, the visa-free, passport-free program does not have a positive impact it used to have as in the past. However, when the program, so we believe, however, when the program moves beyond humanitarian exchange into nationalist politics, it undermines the foundations of the personal connections and goodwill at the local level, which had begun to bridge the historical, geographical, and cultural divide between Russia and Japan. And without such a bridge, unfortunately, this Cold War territorial dispute will remain forever frozen. Thank you very much. This is a photo of us when we had taken a ship from Nemuro to right across, to right to the front of the water borders of the four northern territories. This is already 10 years ago. That's me right there in the middle. Thank you everyone for your attention.
Thank you for the great presentation. The last picture was amazing. So your presentation was about the Kuril Islands and the contested borderlands and how the two countries worked. and how the two countries worked. Uh, well, as I listened to your presentation, it really reminded me of what we are facing now between two Koreas. Um, of course, I mean, from your presentation, this humanitarian aid, um, well, was it led by the central government or local government? I wasn't, I was not sure, but maybe we can cover on that in our discussion. Uh, but anyways, um, so far, in terms of these borderland issues, government-led solutions have been adopted a lot, but as I see it, they were not very successful. So we need to come up with some solutions as an alternative. So maybe NGOs or civic groups, um, non-governmental parties may play a role, maybe. So we can cover on that. Naomi or Yiwashita, Professor Yiwashita may cover on that. Or the local governments may be more active in resolving these um issues or conflicts. So as far as I know, between two Koreas, Chincheon and Won San, these local governments have some kind of their um uh work to do more exchanges. So I think moving forward, um, this may have some implications as a good case um to resolve the inter-Korean issues as well in the borderlands. And also, in terms of the environmental preservation, the one big issue for the Charan Forum is about protect the environment in the borderlands. So um in the borderlands, the economy, the environment protection is also important. So you, you may conduct some joint research for environmental protection in the borderlands and it can be a starting point for further research and cooperation at the borderlands. So on this point, we may have more discussion later.
The next speaker is Professor Seong, Seong Kyung Kim from University of North Korean Studies. And she's going to tell us the mobile North Korean women and long-distance motherhood. The reconstruction of intimacy and the ambivalence of a family. Professor Kim Seong Kyung studied and received her PhD in sociology at the University of Access in UK. She's a, she's a specialist in North Korean studies. And she's also studying the nurse and South Korea mind integration. Professor Kim Seong Kyung, please. Thank you very much for your kind introduction.
As introduced, I'm studying North Korean studies and I a social science major. When I studied social studies, my biggest interest was the activities in the Sino-North Korean borders and the movement in the borders. And I, I was also interested in how actively the North Koreans moved across the borders. And I was asked to speak in Korean for this presentation. So due to time constraint, I am going to read my slides. I hope you understand that. So for starter, I'd like to talk about the North Korean defectors. And that explains why I focus on North Korean women and why North Korean women in the borderlands and border areas are important. Because there is this huge gender gap between North Korean women and men. If you look at the latest data and statistics, especially since the COVID-nineteen pandemic, most of the countries around the world have been closing their borders. And that has an impact in the number of North Korean defectors to South Korea. And eighty percent of the North Korean defectors is women. If you follow the history of North Korean defectors, you will see this strong pattern that the majority of the North Korean defectors are women. And most of the North Korean defectors are choosing the Sino-North I'm sorry, I have to go back to the slide, the previous slide. So most of the North Korean defectors are choosing the Sino-North Korean border to leave North Korea. And some of them stay in the borderlands or some of them aim to leave for South Korea. So specifically, it is not well-known exactly how many North Korean women are living in the Sino-North Korean border because they have this illegal status. So it is difficult to find out and identify the exact number. But there, it is well-known that there is a huge number of North Korean illegal residents along the borderline. The blue line represents the borderline. It is a huge land. It is one thousand four hundred kilometers long. And this is a place called Tandong, and this is where the official activities are happening and taking place. And my interest is here because there is this uh special governing district called Yen Ben, and this is the home to North Korean defectors. The North Korean defectors find their sanctuary here and do economic activities there mostly. And I have visited China to do my research. And my, one of my biggest interests was the mixed borderlands. There are many evidences, and it was very interesting for me personally. And this is a ad signage that shows the modernization of Yen Ben, the special governing district, and the brand, the brand name of the apartment complex is Seoul Bumnay. This indicates the increased activities and interaction between the two Koreas, but traditionally, there have been, it is well-known, there have been active interaction between North Korea and China. This is how I do my research. The table shows how I do my research. I visit the places personally and interview the North Korean women who defected their country. And for the past, for the past several years, I have maintained the same research methodology. And I specifically have focused on motherhood and global migration. And we have seen evidence and shift in motherhood and global migration. Motherhood is a well-known factor. And you, you must be familiar with nurturing and caring, and that is also in the form of ideologies. And my interest, research interest is related to this specific researcher. And this researcher visited Brazil and the researcher found a specific pattern of a motherhood in the country. Because kids there, it was, they didn't receive the motherly love if they didn't have a high chance of being survived in the country. And it can be applied to motherhood of North Korean factors, specifically those women who are at risk of losing their economic uh activities. As you may well know, the motherhood of migrant mothers have changed. Traditionally, mothers are expected to raise their own kids by themselves. But migrating mothers, they are also breadwinners. They have to support their families. And that is the most important factor when we evaluate, for example, motherhood. In this type of study, it is well, it is often mentioned, the Philippine women send their hard-earned money to their home countries to support their families. But it is overlooked in this type of study that illegal migrant women, for example, the women without visa, they are left behind. And this is also one of my research interests. And going back to North Korean motherhood, it is very worth noting that North Korean motherhood has changed. For example, North Korean women have been called one will of revolution. North Korean women were expected to raise the next generation as motherly responsibility. And on the other hand, they were also expected to show this image and reputation of revolutionary uh laborers. So they, these North Korean women are suffering from this, this double whammies. And some people argue that North Korean women's life is the hardest in the world because they are expected to their motherly, uh, their responsibilities as mothers at home. And they are also, at the same time, are expected to do work to support their family. And this woman's name is Kang Ban Seok, who is the mother of Kim Il Sung and Kim Jong Soo. Another woman, he's the, she's the mother of Kim Jong Un. And they are extensively promoted and advertised to infuse the ideal image of mother to North Korean people. Mother plays a very important role, but the image of a mother, the ideal image of a mother has changed in North Korea. Here, we have to focus on the period of Arjus March. Some people say we have to follow the footsteps of Kang Ban Seok and others argue that they have to follow the footsteps of the other women on the previous slide. And this was, this shows the ideological divide. But after the Arjus March period, the image of ideal mothers has changed. For example, the ideal image of mothers in Korea, in North Korea, is a mother who can support her own family. So here you can read that North Korean motherhood as a revolutionary has become important cultural resources to take responsibility of a national crisis. You can read the follow in the slide. This means that when the country is in a crisis, the basic economic activities have been forced women to take them as their responsibility. So I wanted to research this pattern, specifically focusing on the Sino-North Korean borders. And I also paid my attention to the illegal status of North Korean women. It is not known how, exactly how much the North Korean defectors, especially the North Korean women, send money to their home country. But according to some data, North Koreans living in South Korea send approximately two thousand five hundred dollars a year, which is enough money for a family of four can live or last a year. But this is the case only for the North Korean defectors living in South Korea. The North Korean women living in the Sino-North Korean borders are sending more money to their family in North Korea. But they are not just sending uh money, they are sending food and clothes and they are regularly communicating with their families that they left behind. But they are not trying to leave the borderland for South Korea because once they leave the borderland for South Korea, they won't be able to send their money or clothes or food to the families living in North Korea. And this is in, most of the North Korean women living, uh, who left their country are working as an illegal workers, providing care at a nursing home. For example, they are taking care of all the people and children. They are watching children, but still their status is illegal. And they are invisible because they stay inside house. And this is called live-in care work. Their job is called live-in care work. And this is the last slide. Due to the time constraint, I kind of went very fast. One of the things I found was that these North Korean women do live-in care work. So they build a relationship with their employers that is similar to a family. So they build this partnership with their employers. And they play a role of a mother. So the concept of family for them, these North Korean women, is divided. So it, the most important thing is that what motivates these North Korean women to leave their home country, even illegally for Sino-North Korea's borderland, is that they want, these women want to support their family. They want to make money. And they build another type, another family in the borderland. So these North Korean women have two types of family, which means very different, which have very different meanings. And their ways that they earn is very ambivalent. Ways is money that these North Korean women send to their families in North Korea. But the partners think the ways is an allowance for the North Korean women. And lastly, I'd like to say the North Korean Mother Institute this type of pattern in the borderland. This is my tentative conclusion. And I think I covered most of my slides, so I'd like to conclude here. Again, I'm interested in the borders and borderlands. Controlling borders and borderlands having the place of a home to North Korean defectors in a way. And that's all I have. I'd like to conclude my uh presentation with this remark. Thank you very much for listening. Thank you very much. In this forum, one of the most important topics is peace building in borders and borderlands. For the past three days, we heard from a lot of Korean and international experts about this topic. And most of presentations have been focusing on DMZs in Korea or borderlands in Africa. But we didn't, we haven't had a chance to take a look at the borderland in East Asia until today. So today, we had this good opportunity to hear about the borderlands issues located in East Asia. I'm glad to, glad that we have the chance. While preparing for this conference, I thought a lot about the border, peace building, the potential and possibilities of building peace in East Asia. I also have dreamed what we could do to build peace in East Asia. For that, I have studied a lot. One of the solutions I came up with is to build a city of peace in the borderlands between North Korea, Russia and China. And we also spent a lot of time on developing a plan for that. Now let me introduce you the last speaker of this session.
Professor Chan Woo Young from the RCCZ will present on the Tuman River multinational or multi-international city bordering North Korea, China and Russia and how this will contribute to building a city of peace in Northeast Asia. Chan Woo Young, professor of RCCZ, will present. Um, he has an expertise in culture studies and the borders in East Asia uh from the culture perspective. So Mr. Chan, please, um, go with your presentation.
Hello, I am Chan Woo Young, professor of the RCCZ. Um, thank you, Dr. Yu Young of the UNRISD. And I'd like to thank people for our session as well for three days. You might have great presentations, but we can go more. I'm on site now in the venue. And behind the scene, there are many staff working very hard and busy. I wanna say thank you for them as well. We are having this international forum and I worked on preparing my presentation in English, but we have interpretation. And also, I think at this time, um, not many people from the Western world might be awake. So I will present in Korean. Um, so let me briefly comment on the session. Well, our session, the key word is solidarity, uh, assembly and governance. These three keywords have a parallel relations and also the solidarity is at the center. And we are now thinking about how we can get there. And as you can see, UN has this SDG goals, Sustainable Development Goals. and as you can see UN has this SDG Goals Sustainable Development Goals Report and they have this phrase or agenda of leaving no one behind that was very impressive I work in this RCCZ and that means a lot for what I do as a researcher Antonia Negri and they talked about the assembly where there's no owner of these movements and they also talked about this co existence in the governance and the peace building and solidarity for peace is really important and borderlands is a venue where a lot of things happening so it's not just from top down but they the local actors have to work on their own that's really critical rather than reaching consensus dissent is a more important value in here so when we can achieve that the coexistence where everything that exists can coexist can matter before we have a meeting um with Dr. Yu Chang the topic of my research was about the coexistence where no one is really lagging behind so I think that's why I'm chosen to be presenting here also although I am sitting here and not standing up here well anyway this coexistence is not just for a keyword for the borderlands when we have this coexistence in borderlands then only then the whole world can have peace so today what I present will be about the um a project at first we thought that there was a top-down development project but that was a very comprehensive local-led project and as Cha mentioned Professor Cha introduced I research in culture but my presentation today will be about this urban development well urban development itself was not an easy topic for me to research but I came to be interested in this topic because it felt like a long like a narrative for me so it's not really realized but that's why we can call it as a narrative but there are many different elements and aspects are converged into this whole project so I wanna call it as a narrative that's why I started this project so the Tuman River International City bordering North Korea and China and Russia let me tell you um what we wanted to achieve the fonts are maybe too small for you but that was started in two thousand thirteen planned by the National Policy Committee under the South Korean presidential power that was pursued or accelerated by the economic interest of North Korea China Russia Japan and South Korea the city was planned to be built as a forested city with three countries bordered by North Korea's Najin and Songboong China's Fongchon and Russia's Hassan we'd like a one million pongs here and you might see where they will be located and how they are gonna look like but however there's not much that we remember about this project and not many people even remember the name and the details of the project this development plan was led by Kim Seok Cha the architect and the chairman of the project and he contained this whole aspiration to turn the culture and education as a means to restore the history and culture of this border using it as a resource however the economic ideas and the development project was on the frontline so we don't really remember about this whole project so I thought that we need to reconstruct these whole memories about this project and these four countries promoted this project as a multinational and free trade city and that's why how a few people remember this project however the aim of this presentation is to confirm the distance between from the economic synchronization and the possibility of building peace through the restoration of historical culture international cities we don't have that much literature available on this project so I'll talk about how things have been going on with this four countries and the project and we will look into the blueprint of the chairman Kim Seok Cha and there is not much known about this project since its launch that's quite interesting in two thousand thirteen December that is an article of Cho Son Yeo Bo a daily newspaper of Korea and about this project we had a lot of discussion between the four countries and that was accepted by the government and after this article was announced the government said it's not their official position saying that it's not decided and the Presidential Unification Preparatory Committee wanted to build this free trade zone and that was reported to the Ministry of Unification that was reported and they will launch the project in January however the government said it was not what they wanted to do and the government said that it was only a personal idea of Chairman Kim Seok Cha and that the Presidential Committee was not aware of it and they were cautious about the plan but I think that was quite interesting for me because that suggests that this development is not a government-led project from above or top-down but it was kind of a joint work of individuals and governance from below and that was not simply aimed at economic interest communities and also this whole journey of the development might have been indicating the shortage of development vision of the government so that was why I thought this was a narrative and they focused on the peace building work and they wanted to unite this North and South Korea and thinking about this whole vision was the most close thing to the peace process and why the government thought that this was only the personal idea of Kim Seok Cha we need to look into the North Korean policy of Park Nee administration as you may remember one big key word was the unification the jet pot that was the rhetoric of this government they thought North Korea as a resource for economic profit creation in addition the security policy by the government at the time was just adding more attention to inter-Korean relations because there's like nuclear bomb and these whole south security issues and the thought of from China all these issues indicate the attitude of the government toward North Korea so instead of having peaceful coexistence hostile coexistence was what they wanted to do based on the North Korea's isolation so if Kim Seok Cha's multinational city on Tuman River aimed only at free economic zones there seems to be no reason for the government to deny it it cannot be ruled out the possibility that the some impediment to this hostile existence was inherent in the plan so what were the obstacles that existed in this whole plan and in addition the Obama administration during the time had the hostile hostile position or stance toward North Korea at the time and it can mean also something and we may have these reasonable doubts about that so the economic development was one pillar and we thought that this was a policy from top-down but peace or division and unification was the ideas separated by the people at the bottom so the Kim Seok Cha was the head of the project however there is a possibility that even though no one really remembers of this project it's so unfortunate that this whole process in terms of the unification and peace building were not really considered enough in the process of policymaking and that was how we are not really remembering much about this project and that's sad Kim Seok Cha had this concept of the multinational city and it began in early two thousand he was running the Archibane Institute of Architecture and he moved the National Assembly to Yeowido through the Han River and Yeowido Master Plan a long time ago and has designed the entire city by designing the Chongmyo and Nam San redevelopment plan and he tried to make this Tuman River multinational city a bridge for post-division era and unification his idea was to create a preemptive foundation for unification by having a quantum jump of a North Korean economy with that in mind reports about this we may not say that this was not true so in the the PCR and the TSR are meeting in this two countries and that supports the idea but still nevertheless it is worth noting that this city opens an era of deep division and it's a journey leading to unification this can be an infrastructure of like a space for the six-party talks and they aim to be an international city so the cities are not just for economic development because the fair distribution of profits is virtually impossible a win-win is possible to different desires Kim Seok Cha defined the city's fundamental driving force as welfare happiness and peace expecting that the long history of conflict that has been experienced as the border between the North Korea China Russian border will be resolved only by economic interest is close to being overly optimistic the approach may be close to the Orientalist representation of East Asia in response to neoliberalism so they had this plan to get into this Tuman River many countries wanted to do that for military cultural and other interests so that I think that can be said as a very thick node with this conflict of different interests this city if it can have this international city it should play a role of gateway but we need to be cautious in here gateway means an equal public footing but if it includes this imbalance or inequality of the economic development then we may not have achieved this vision as you may know surrounding the Tuman River there are many development projects as you can see on the screen on the right you can on the right bottom you can see I could not capture all the developments UN development plan wanting to develop the Tuman River and these broad areas so these whole projects are fail still underway or some of them already failed in two thousand five we had this project and Changji Two Changchunjiren Tuman with all these plans the development has rather slowed it down Kim Seok Cha had an interview and he said I will forget about Yongsan and leave the rest of my life for the Tuman River when I first heard that I couldn't understand but that was interesting because his Tuman River project means some reflections on the Yongsan development in two thousand ten when he embodied the Tuman River multinational city the Korean society was severely suffering from the after effects of the Yongsan disaster and in addition the Yongsan project was had the bankrupt situation and Kim Seok Cha had an alternative to create a special national district in Yongsan so it means something for them his Tuman River project started from the trajectory of the criticism of Yongsan which has become a huge rear estate speculation board and a place of conflict and sacrifice between public power and civil society he defined Yongsan as a contact zone located in the middle of the three different districts of Seoul so his approach is linked to the concept of building the Seoul Arts Center in Seochuk they go through the Seoul Arts Center from Kyungbokgung Palace to the National Museum the National Library and the Supreme Court and the Seoul Arts Center so his development plan aims to create economic profits on one hand of course but he also struggled to have a gateway to achieve coexistence with various cultures considering this philosophy of his development it is able we can guess that the Tuman River city made it to forget the existence of borders rather than deliberately arousing its nationality I I think I need to close well development as a culture researcher maybe it may sound like an excuse but I think development can be an imaginative narrative and we can have the tentative conclusion which is that there are many different desires that cannot be captured in the development and I could see that from his project and for peace building the two Koreas have a strong aspiration and the people the local residents from the bottom wanted to have this narrative and that was very strong and closely neaty and for the individuals and the local communities and the coexistence in governance are now being as now be created as a journey and he they wanted to achieve this coexistence and I could see that indications from the project thank you for listening thank you the last presentation I'm sorry I cannot hear these speakers there's something wrong with the audio now it's working thank you for the last presentation for our session Kim Seok Cha he already passed away the architect built or designed the Seoul Arts Center in Gangnam and he had this grand vision which was already forgotten about the Tuman River multinational city has been reminded by Professor Chan so for our special session the we wanted to cover more about the expertise from researchers and we invited one discussant and for our discussion from Chungang University we have Professor Son Byung Won and Professor Seon studied in the Michigan University to have his PhD in politics and he also is leading the Korean Political Party Association after his comments are over well today we have Naomi Chi and Professor Iwashita two of them were supposed to present however Chi led the presentation and we also have Professor Iwashita so we may hear more from him to complement the presentations especially the current status of the borderland research in East Asia so we may invite him later so Professor Seon please thank you for I we work together in the politics and the international studies I have ten minutes to comment thank you for the great presentations from five speakers or six speakers I found it very interesting and well I may not be really qualified to be a discussant for your presentations but I wanna comment a few things about your presentation and I learned a lot so what I'm gonna do I may skip some of your presentations so please understand due to the time constraints what I learned from this session was that in the politics whether it's international politics or the nation-state nation-state is some key starting point and what we do was in the nineteen forty-eight we had this modern system built and we had this international system and then also we had this financial globalization WTO and the human rights and the environment and these are the key issues and the global politics regime are what we often say and the globalization is another thing that we think we have globalization localization so in terms of these borderlands or the contact zone in principle they are they may not be explained by the state boundary of the nation-state even though we are talking about it in the context of the borderlands but when I listen to your presentation still the nation-state they have this globalization and before globalization there's a very strong system that's put in place the local residents whether for like their kings or the family or for other reasons they have this loyalty to their nation-states and they are having the limitations at the local level when the local entities are emerged we see some corporations but still there are limitations as well so as a whole one thing I found well the Biden administration will affect the North Korea and well I think what really matters here is the nation-state in terms of this contact zone in the context we need to have a very convincing argument that was what I thought well I think that's it for my impression I learned a lot really from your presentations so I would just freely share my observations from Professor Lim's presentation you talked about this island of conflict and down there becoming the island of exchange so there were some transformations that the Suzima Island had experienced and the island well geographically and emotionally they are very close to Korean people and they are now becoming an island of the exchange and this Auriang Festival that they are having so but due to this conflict between the two countries things are getting more difficult and tense So but due to this conflict between the two countries, things are getting more difficult and tense. And as you talked about it, um you mentioned about the exchange and also you mentioned about imperialism and colonial rule. And these elements were forgotten. And on this point, as Naomi Chi mentioned, the Curial Island, for example, I think as I read it, I think there are some similarities. For example, with the visa-free program on the four islands of the Northern Territories, whether it's Russians or Japanese, they can move freely between these countries. And Japan, maybe they are using it politically to have these Northern Territories back. So there's two things, I think. They are having this humanitarian aid and some, in the long term, they want to make it more like political. So there are two tracks. But for the Sisima Island, well, in imperialism or some other discussions are not being made. That's one thought I had. And the Sisima Island, the issues, well, I think things will get better. I mean, with the Suga, the Prime Minister of Japan, and the Biden, the new president, when they become the leader of these two countries, things we may become easier to solve. And the other thing is that for um, the population decrease, I mean, technical question, maybe, in the Korean visitors are going down, is it the reason for the decrease of the population? Or is it other reason for why this Sisima Island um population is going down? And my question to Zhou An and Zhou. Harrison Ford had this Crossing, a movie for families, and it was Muslims. And the Australia, maybe there was some Korean family as well. It was a very good movie. And it really reminds me of watching that movie. And the other interesting point is, as a political researcher, this borderland has some element of affection. So it's not easy to put that into perspective, but that was very interesting. It's not a secret zone. And another thing was, when you think about these borderlands or border areas, there are people and we need to protect the security of the people, so military state is being built and there is another regimes being built. But in the globalized world, the immigration is becoming another war um issue. In African countries, they have this climate change and people leave to the other countries for food. So in this world, the issue of the borderlands, it's not just about the security, but it can increase the insecurity, so with this whole new um regime. So when you uh dig, dig it further, well, I may not be able to make further comments on your presentation, but the Biden administration, the new administration of the US, the Homeland Security Secretary is the Alejandro Mayorkas, is the new guy. So maybe in terms of the borderline issues, are you gonna see some changes in their policies? And also in two thousand um twenty-four, the Trump may run again. So on these migrant issues in two thousand and twenty-four, are we gonna see some kind of forward-looking policies from the Democratic Party? Um that's some kind of question that I have for Angela's presentation and to Naomi Chi. Well, Russia wanted to have control over the Northern Territories. Uh what I learned from the other forum is that Prime Minister Abe and President Putin over these Northern Territories. Um President Putin's biggest priority was to get the support from the other countries or to develop the Siberia region. So they had some progress on this whole conversation. They had some level of agreement over this negotiation. So we thought that things are going well. But now the President Putin over these uh four territories, they are now gaining or wanting to gain more um control. So how these are related? That's my question. And on the Curial Islands, the residents, well, I'm not sure who are living there. Are they, I know some Japanese people are living there, but on these Curial Islands, they are similar to the people who are now living in the Hokkaido or what term, in terms of the composition of the population, how many are from the Hoshi region and from Japan, or how many are from Hokkaido, or some similarity of the population? I wanna know this whole competition of the local residents on the Curial Islands. It was a very interesting presentation. And also, Professor Kim Song-gyeong, well, I'm not an expert on this issue, but when you watch a movie um featured by Ha Jung-ho, there's a movie named Hang, Hang He. And I think that shows the ambivalent structure of family. And Ha Jung-ho was searching for his wife and they um lived with a partner, so in Korea. So this ambivalent family structure, is it something like that, what you were referring to here? And what you mentioned in the presentation was about the immigrants from like Tumen River, Amnu River to those regions, women who are immigrating to the region. They had these economic roles and they had this distant or long-distance motherhood. So is it only for women or is it applying to like all the people in North Korea? That was just a simple question I wanted to raise. And also to um Professor Cho, I learned a lot, but I want to make one comment. I think this is, I mean, at the local level, I mean, globalization, globalization, and the local, like Chincheon, Wonju, and other cities work on its own. We have these three different cities. And what's interesting here is the climate change or migration or global pandemic. And you focused on Kim Seok-tae as an architect of this development project. It's very personal and the local project and it can create some transformation. And you talked about the narrative and what I wanna comment is, well, this is also about the nation-state and the diverse interests and they may break down and in this Northeast Asian super grid is to have this wind power from Mongolia to China, Korea, and Japan. It was a huge, it is a huge project. And the energy from Siberia, the power generated there will be transmitted to the other countries. But for the security issues, I mean, they had to go through North Korea. Are we gonna do that or not? And the Prime Minister Abe, also, I think Son Jong-yi also wanted to pursue the project. But the Prime Minister Abe, um, I mean, the underwater cable um and with the China, they didn't want that and the the US didn't want that too. So the clean energy is a global issue and the Kim Seok-tae, the architect, wanted to build this multinational city. These whole issues, when you look at it in perspective, this nation-state system and their controls over the con, con, the, the countries. Well, given this, the coexistence in the borderlands may, rather than breaking down the nation-state, we need to convince the stakeholders to achieve the vision. So that's my brief comments and observations.
Thank you very much for your insight and comments. Before we hear answers from the speakers, I'd like to ask a question for Professor Iwashika.
Professor, Professor Iwashika introduced the concept of the borderlands in East Asia and he is an expert on these territory and borderline issues. Please, um, Iwashita, if you have wanna, if you wanna make comments, please.
Okay, uh first of all, Seok-tae and uh respectful colleagues, thank you for inviting me such an intensive and interesting sessions. Uh the, I am now sitting uh in a hotel in Sendai for the conference. So the uh with regret, these rooms, every room, uh the password change sharply at noon. Therefore, in a, in twenty minutes, I'm all, 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 I'm automatically disappears. Then I apologize, uh the beforehand of my disappearance. So the uh let me as supplement some words for Naomi's presentations. Uh the what the significance of the interaction of the people or the southern Kuril Islands and Nemuro and Hokkaido. Usually, sovereignty issue is very hard and always disturbing, hindering the borderlands corporation, particularly undemarked borders, any places. It's uh un-normalized, it means that uh the after deciding the borderline, any interaction beyond the border begins without demarcation, uh the, without finishing the border disputes. Uh anywhere, it's hard to uh the cooperate, uh the neighbors beyond so-called borders. But this case in um non-visa, non-passport regime between uh the Russia and Japan, particularly on the Kuril Islands and Japan proper, it's a very unique system because uh the, we still have sovereignty issues, disputed islands, but people's flow can go back beyond uh unfeasible borders. So this is a very innovative method. Uh the concerning in the border studies term, first, it's, you know, the term of permability. Usually, if the, this regime didn't work, Nemuro City has been dead end. But thanks to this regime, Nemuro works as a gateway for next place with neighbors. So it means kind of the uh timeline for borderlands change from fortress, uh the coexistence and interaction up to integration. So the, this regime made Nemuro a gateway for southern Kuris and permability, people's flow is higher than before. So the, we've, we stick to only the sovereignty issues and more high politics. There, this kind of discussion, we never pay attention. Of course, the Japanese government at the beginning wanted to use this regime for as a leverage to push the Russian islanders across to Japan's interests. But more than twenty-five years, almost thirty years, it worked, but no return, no solution. Then we now identify the meaning, significance of the regime. So it's apart from the solution, it's apart from the uh solving the disputes. How we open the people, people's flow, do not touch on the sovereignty issue. Therefore, this regime should be considered as very, very unique, applicable for other places. This is the first issue. And Naomi didn't tell, but this area also have a similar regime, is a fishery regime. So we have a special regime fishery with Russia, these southern Kuril places. So here is uh the Kunashiri Islands. So you imagine, the within twelve mile zone from Kunashiri coast, Japanese fishery can operate, is in twenty, is in twelve mile zone. It means that so-called territorial waters of Russia. Of course, Japan paid some money, uh the uh the name of the corporation. But it's also unique. No states allow the other countries to operate fishery within twenty, uh twelve mile zone in the territorial waters. This is also unique. So that we as borderlands studies, uh researchers, pay much attention to this kind of uh cooperation at the local. Because it's almost reflect on the local initiative, local interests. Finally, uh some asked, Professor Cho also suggested environmental cooperation. Environment, the environmental cooperation, of course, it's uh beyond the sovereignty issues, border issue. But nations and sovereignty always hinders this cooperation. But some Japanese NPO uh they propose, uh the uh joint circumstance uh preparations. For example, the Kunashiri Islands, very close to Shikotan Peninsula. Shikotan uh Peninsula is a Nazan-Nemuro district place. So here's a very, very rich nature, world nature, heritage place. You can enjoy, of course, the hot springs on Sen, Korean loves, not only on Sen, deers, bears, whales, dolphins, so, so wonderful greens and winter snow. Uh this, okay, I, I, I stop one minute. But this is Shiretoko and Kunashiri in the same environment. So Japanese NGO, NPO propose joint the heritage world proposal. But Russia bit hesitate, but I wish this kind of format work. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comment. Now it is time to talk about the answer, hear about the answers of the questions. I'd like to start with Professor Zhou. She is the farthest away from us, so I'd like to start with Professor Zhou. Could you unmute yourself, Professor? Professor Zhou, we can't hear you. Could you unmute yourself?
I, I did unmute here. Can you hear me now? Okay, it's weird, it keeps going off and on. Um, so Professor Seong, thank you for your comments. I don't really have much to add, um except that uh I'm not really as optimistic that the Biden administration, with the change in the administration, that things would get better, particularly along the US-Mexico border. Uh because it, you know, with um after nine eleven, with Tom Ridge as the Director of the Homeland Security, things went bad, but it actually got even worse during Obama administration. Um that the Obama administration actually um even passed, you know, you probably know this, one of the biggest military spending bill in the history of the United States. And so there's no guarantee for me that Biden administration would make anything easier or improve. In fact, um as far as the militarization goes along any of the borders that I've mentioned before and I, you know, that I work on in other projects, um I really don't think that it's going to be reduced or lessened. In, in fact, it might actually become a bit more ratcheted up. So that was my response. Since I um have a moment here, I also wanted to share with Professor Kim that there's actually a similar instance of women at the US-Mexico borders, as you probably know, uh women who are workers, who are citizens of Mexico, but also migrant workers um in the Maculadoras, the transnational corporations, and that's a borderland, right? They're protected because of the NAFTA with the US. Um what's really interesting is that a lot of those transnational corporations are actually Korean-owned. So you know, it's the network of global economy and who is vulnerable um, you know, to this predatory um capital flow is really interesting to me. And it does happen in a lot in borderlands that are visible and also invisible. So, thank you.
Thank you for the comment. And next, we have Professor Kim Song-gyeong.
So Professor Kim Song-gyeong, there's a question for you, an online viewer, ask a question for you. You talked about the motherhood of the North Korean woman in your presentation. And this question is about the fatherhood of North Korean men. So could you tell us more about the fatherhood of North Korean men? I think I delivered a very compact presentation because due to time constraints, so I have more, a lot more to say. So answering the question, what I wanna say is that North Korean regime, you may view as a patriarchic regime, but let's talk about parents, your parenting. There, technically, there could be no difference between men and women in North Korea because the North Korean leader is the father of the whole population. And he is a political leader with absolute power. And the North Korean leader, the father, started rationing, they, he handed out food and everything else necessary. necessary for the survival of the people. So the existence of the national leader collapsed and it was gone in nineteen ninety-four, when Kim Il-sung died. And it was the start of the Arduous March. And it was a huge paradigm shift in North Korean regime. And the responsibilities of supporting the family has been on, has fallen on the mothers of North Korea. And the role of mothers in North Korea has been reinterpreted. Like they are the breadwinner. They should be the breadwinners. And it was a very interesting research point. And fathers are often viewed as leaders in North Korea. You have your father in your family. But in North Korea, father doesn't have any economic power. They are not able to support their families by working. So the biggest challenge is, in North Korea, is the breakdown of a family. A divorce is not possible by agreement between two people. Divorce is only possible by trial in North Korea. But it is changing as families are breaking down. So fathers are overlooked and ignored. And children often view their fathers as someone who are not capable enough to support them. So answering the question again, especially answering the question of question raised by Professor Son. Informal area has emerged since the start of Arduous March. And the informal area, informal economy has been led by North Korean women. By incapacitating the control of the borderland, North Korean women were able to stay in the borderland between North Korea and China. And it was activated and accelerated by globalization. North Korean defector, especially women, they left their home country either to China or to South Korea. And they have these shelters and special places or sanctuaries that they can find as home. And North Korean women, again, they are very important players for the economy and they have their own voice. And there are different types of, wide range of types of views to women, especially the North Korean women. And families are sacred to the view of North Korean women. But some people in North Korea say, families are nothing but a place or a unit that I need, I get money from. So I think this is very servant, serving and very flexible and centralized and normative. It is against the normative and centralized concept of a family. It is not technically breaking down the meaning of family. This is very unique to borders and borderlands. So borders and borderlands are redefining the meaning of a family. And thank you very much again for asking this question. And I'd like to thank the other speakers as well.
Thank you. We only have like six minutes. So we will turn the microphone in three minutes to the other speakers. Lim, please. Professor Lim, please. Please unmute yourself, I mean.
For your comments, I'd like to answer your question briefly. The reason why Tsushima's population is decreasing is not just for economic decline. The population decreased even when the number of Korean tourists to Tsushima increased. This is very clear compared with Jeju Island, where the population is growing as the number of the tourists is increasing. So I think the instability of the island is one of the biggest factors in population decline. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And Mr. John, please. Yeah, thank you, Mr. Son, Professor Son, for your question. Well, three minutes. Well, I will not gonna spend it all, but I'm on the site now. Well, I think when we have this forum and conferences, we have speakers and audience. But I'm very, feel awkward and lonely because I'm the only one here and we have like a hybrid and virtual conferences. So I'm a bit nervous. But anyway, thank you for your question. As I listened to your question, it reminded me of the past. I entered the Ministry or Department of Korea and I learned that Baek Tae-won Yoo-min was really inspiring figure for my research. And he said he wanted to get to the closer. And as you mentioned, as we cross the borders, the crossing borders itself is now being bound within this ideology of this nation-state. But the close of this whole thing should go to the point where we can really dig into this whole issue. And we should ask this fundamental question. And I think Kim Seok-chul, the architect, had this vision. And his work would not be enough to get there. And when you have more and more of such works, then we may go to a breaking point and where our imagination and our work really have a huge impact. So maybe I'm really rattling myself, but I think we need to reconstruct everything. And that will be the only venue or space on the earth. Thank you for listening. Chi, Naomi, please.
One minute. Professor Iwashi-ta, thirty seconds about Putin and Abe.
Okay, thank you. The question, because this is just the performance of Abe's, this twenty-seven times of Putin meetings. But factually, no progresses, just a diplomatic show. If you want to know much more, please Google Keanan Institute Wilson Centers, Akira Iwashi-ta's article, Nazan Territories. You can enjoy details of how Abe's performance there.
Okay, and thirty seconds for me about the indigenous people, the people who have inhabited the four Northern Territories islands. Right now, of course, there's no Japanese people. They all repatriated to Hokkaido. And the people that originally were there, of course, some were born there, but many of them moved from Hokkaido. And as you know, people who moved from Hokkaido to the Northern Territories, they're all from Honshu because, you know, Hokkaido is a colony, was a colony of Japan. And so all the people that inhabited Hokkaido at that time are all from Honshu. And the people that moved from Hokkaido-Nemuro area to the Northern Territories, there are, they moved, some were born there, but they all repatriated. Everyone repatriated to Japan, to Hokkaido. And as for the indigenous people, yes, there are a small percentage of the Ainu and the Nibuf people in the Northern Territories. Of course, they say that those islands are theirs, which is a valid, of course, declaration. And there is the Ainu Association in Hokkaido. And if you go to their website, they have a whole declaration and statement about how they're the first inhabitants of the islands. That's it.
Thank you very much for enthusiastic participation in the panel session. But we are, time is almost up. So in this session, we discussed that the nation-states achieved a lot in the twentieth century. But at the same time, nation-states have lost a lot. So in this session, we discussed the potential of peace-building in borderlands. And with that, I'd like to conclude the special session. Thank you very much.
That was a great discussion in just two hours and excellent time management. The special session was by Reconciliation and Coexistence in Contact Zone Research Center. Thank you very much, in particular to moderator Yong-gu Cha and also the six presenters for your participation. Now, we have another special session coming up in about an hour from now. And the topic is Local and Subnational Perspectives on Sustainable and Peaceful Development in the East Asian Borderlands. That will be starting at one o'clock Korea time. And all the discussions are available in English and Korean. So please do join us. At one o'clock, we'll be starting on the dot. And we'll be back to see you in about an hour. Thank you very much.